Good evening Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, May 9th, 2023. With that, can we have a roll call?
Council agency authority members Stockton?
Here.
Ritchie?
Here.
Silva?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Wiley?
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley?
Here. Will you stand with me for a moment of silence? Councilmember Chapman, will you lead us in the pledge?
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation underground and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So with that, item three, the approval of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, I'd like to swap 9A to 9C, being that we're going to have an item tonight on Measure M, and there's a presentation on Measure M, and I feel that probably would be in our best interest to have that update first, if we could do that.
That would concur, Mayor, so we can do that. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to item five, and we have several proclamations tonight, and bear with me, it was very interesting when I opened the first one and signed all these earlier, and this one is the May 2023 Older Americans Month, and I'm finding myself, we were chuckling up here on the dials, some of us fit that now, we call it wisdom, but I'd like to, I'd like to read this, and I don't have my glasses, that's the older American side as well. Whereas the City of Vacaville recognizes the increasing growth of the aging population and is committed to providing needed services and opportunities for residents of all ages to participate in community life, and whereas Vacaville is home to more than 20,000 citizens aged 60 or older who are part of a growing population with evolving needs that contribute to the social and economic fabric of the community, and whereas our community can provide recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support system to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age, combating ageist attitudes by honoring their past, present, their present, and future contributions, and whereas our McBride Senior Center was founded in 1967, sorry about that, and serves the aging population where they are at while building the path to inclusiveness and the changing needs of residents as they age. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 Older Americans Month. To all of you, thank you for Vacaville, and do I have someone that I could, there we go, come on forward.
And good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Zee DeLeone, and I am the Recreation Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department. Each year, May is recognized as Older Americans Month, and at the McBride Senior Center, we are family to older Americans in the Vacaville community. The Parks and Recreation Department engages our older population through fitness classes such as yoga, tai chi, and zumba, recreational programs such as bingo, painting classes, and music socials, our popular trips and tours outings, free social support programs such as health insurance counseling and advocacy programs, notary services, legal aid, and special multicultural events such as Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, and Senior Citizen Day to enhance the quality of life for active aging adults. Special thanks to the staff and volunteers that make a difference in our active aging community. The Parks and Recreation Department is excited to collaborate with this inspiring group of people and organizations with a shared mission to connect with our older population in ways that increase choices, equity, and well-being for all Vacavillians. Thank you.
Very different on this side.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Carley. Good evening, Vice Mayor Wiley, and members of the City Council. National Police Week is celebrated every third week in May and offers the opportunity for honor, remembrance, and peer support while allowing law enforcement survivors and citizens to gather and pay respects to those peace officers who gave their lives in the line of duty. According to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund, 64 officers were shot and killed in the line of duty in 2022. This continues a disturbing trend of an increase in firearms-related deaths compared to the average number of officers killed by gunfire each year in the prior decade. The 64 deaths by gunfire in 2022 continues to represent an increase of 21% compared to recent historical norms. In California, eight law enforcement officers died in the line of duty in 2022. I, speaking on behalf of the officers and staff of the Vacaville Police Department, want to share that we are honored to serve this community and feel the support of Vacaville citizens and leaders alike. Thank you, Mayor Carley, and the other members of the City Council for this proclamation and recognition of the continued sacrifices of the men and women of law enforcement and those who proudly serve as peacekeepers within the Vacaville Police Department. Thank you.
Stay there, because I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Vacaville play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and whereas our nation's law enforcement officers serve with courage, dedication, and strength, they fearlessly enforce our laws even at the risk of personal peril, safeguarding our property, our liberty, our lives, and we owe them and their families our full and enduring support. Whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 14th through the 20th, 2023 National Police Week. Congratulations. And we have, we have actually two more, so can we have Paula Ledoux, our Clinical Services Administrator, come forward?
Would you like to share anything?
Sure. Okay. I didn't know if you were going to do the proclamation first, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and Councilmembers. Mental Health Awareness Month has been observed in May in the United States since 1949. The theme for Mental Health Awareness Month this year is "Look Around and Look Within." From our neighborhoods to genetics, many factors impact our mental health. We encourage everyone to consider how the world around you affects your mental health. This includes considering the importance of access to safe and stable housing, healthy home environments, safe neighborhoods, and access to parks and nature. And I hear pickleballs, great for mental health. Another shout out just to our Housing Departments and also Parks and Rec with the clinical services activities that we have and programs, we work closely with those departments as well, and it just kind of, I think, shows how everything that the city does and employees of the city do is important for the well-being of all community members, and that impacts mental health. I would also like to highlight some of the programs specifically provided by clinical services in the police department that provide support to those facing mental health challenges. The Youth Services Section of our police department includes school resource officers, family support workers, and licensed mental health clinicians who supervise counseling interns. This past school year, 10 graduate student interns from several area universities provided mental health counseling to general education students at 13 schools in the Vacaville Unified School District, including elementary, middle, and high schools. Interns provided 1,085 counseling sessions to 165 unduplicated students throughout the school year, helping youth cope with a wide variety of therapeutic concerns, and of these students, 32 expressed some form of suicidal ideation, and were formally assessed for the appropriate level of intervention. These counseling supports are available to students attending participating public schools free of charge. Our police department is also home to the Family Resource Center for Vacaville, where any community member is welcome to meet with a family support worker for a comprehensive assessment followed by either in-house services or outside referrals to the supports that they need. Family support workers meet with their clients for follow-up appointments for a minimum of six months to check in and ensure that their needs continue to be met. In 2022, family support workers assisted community members with 120 in-office visits, 414 phone or Zoom appointments, and 312 walk-in meetings. The Family Resource Center provided basic needs assistance, including rent and utility assistance, crisis counseling, victim advocacy, and referrals to ongoing treatment. The purpose of Mental Health Awareness Month is to educate the public about the importance of mental wellness and to decrease the stigma of mental illness. Police Department staff, including officers, mental health clinicians, and family support workers, play a vital role in responding to those in crisis and providing ongoing supports. Anyone in the community seeking support can call the Family Resource Center at 707-469-6608, and we will help link you to the appropriate level of care. And I just wanted to thank Council for your ongoing support of the clinical program that we do have at the City of Vacaville. I know it helps a lot of people, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you, and thank you for the proclamation.
Well, I haven't read it yet, but first and foremost, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing, I'm very familiar with both the Family Resource Center and for those who are not, and our Clinical Services Division. It's unique, it's one of a kind, there's very few cities in the entire nation, especially of our size, that have anything like what we have here. You and your team helped to certify those to get their, you know, their clinician certificates, and so through that process that we manage, we provide, you provide through your staff, those counseling services that is invaluable for the health of our families through the students in this, also through the FRC. I saw it firsthand, and it's the most amazing thing that, that you're a part of, and I'm so thankful that it's here in Vacaville. With that, I want to read the proclamation, and that is, whereas the mental health of our citizens is essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses, mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. There's a strong body of research that supports specific tools that Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their mental health and well-being, and whereas feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many citizens living with mental illness from seeking help. The National Mental Health Association reminds us all that seeking help is a sign of strength and not a weakness, whereas the early and effective treatment, many individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 Mental Health Awareness Month. So, thank you. Last but not least, if I could have Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager, come forward? Well, it's not Tim, it looks like it's going to be Don Burris, our Economic Development Director. Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Would you like me to, okay, great, I'm very happy to do this this evening. Every May is a National Small Business Month, and we're really happy to partner with our Big Four partners. Our Big Four partners are the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and Downtown Vacaville. Collectively, we call ourselves the Big Four, and we work together to create programs and activities to help support all of our businesses and small businesses alike. So just to give you a little background, Small Business Month is a special celebration month created by the Small Business Administration to celebrate small businesses. It's always in the month of May every year, and it's a special tribute to celebrate small businesses, their courage, community efforts, and hard work for the entire month. Here's something I always love getting as a fact, did you know that small businesses are considered the backbone of the United States? As of new data that we just received last year, 31.7 million of our businesses are small businesses in the United States employing less than 10 people, so they really are the backbone of our country and the unsung heroes of the American dream. The City of Vacaville, we have more than 4,000 small businesses throughout the city and over 400 just in our downtown core alone. To celebrate and assist our small businesses, the Vacaville Chamber, Visit Vacaville, and Downtown Vacaville, and the Solano-Napa Small Business Development Center have a variety of programs scheduled this month to help, to help our small businesses. And to support the small business community, the Economic Development Department is currently running a series of ready-ups spots on KUIC radio to encourage our residents to shop small and to shop local, and I'd like to encourage you all to do the same this month. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to read portions of this because some of this actually you just read, so you're good on your statistics. This proclamation, whereas small businesses employ 40% of the employees in the private sector in our country and contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas along with the advocacy groups such as the Solano-Napa County Small Business Development Center, the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and public and private organizations across the country which have endorsed Small Business Month, today the City of Vacaville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 Mental Health Awareness Month. So, thank you. Last but not least, if I could have Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager, come forward? Well, it's not Tim, it looks like it's going to be Don Burris, our Economic Development Director. Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Would you like me to, okay, great, I'm very happy to do this this evening. Every May is a National Small Business Month, and we're really happy to partner with our Big Four partners. Our Big Four partners are the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and Downtown Vacaville. Collectively, we call ourselves the Big Four, and we work together to create programs and activities to help support all of our businesses and small businesses alike. So just to give you a little background, Small Business Month is a special celebration month created by the Small Business Administration to celebrate small businesses. It's always in the month of May every year, and it's a special tribute to celebrate small businesses, their courage, community efforts, and hard work for the entire month. Here's something I always love getting as a fact, did you know that small businesses are considered the backbone of the United States? As of new data that we just received last year, 31.7 million of our businesses are small businesses in the United States employing less than 10 people, so they really are the backbone of our country and the unsung heroes of the American dream. The City of Vacaville, we have more than 4,000 small businesses throughout the city and over 400 just in our downtown core alone. To celebrate and assist our small businesses, the Vacaville Chamber, Visit Vacaville, and Downtown Vacaville, and the Solano-Napa Small Business Development Center have a variety of programs scheduled this month to help, to help our small businesses. And to support the small business community, the Economic Development Department is currently running a series of ready-ups spots on KUIC radio to encourage our residents to shop small and to shop local, and I'd like to encourage you all to do the same this month. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to read portions of this because some of this actually you just read, so you're good on your statistics. This proclamation, whereas small businesses employ 40% of the employees in the private sector in our country and contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas along with the advocacy groups such as the Solano-Napa County Small Business Development Center, the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce, Visit Vacaville, and public and private organizations across the country which have endorsed Small Business Month, today the City of Vacaville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor, on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 Small Business Month. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Before I move on, I just want to see if the Council wanted to make any comments because we had four great proclamations. This is really the work that we do, and in as much as I made the proclamation, is there any, any of you that wanted to share a few words? We'll just keep it short so that we don't have to belabor it tonight, but I think this is important. This is the work that our staff does, and that's why we do these proclamations from, from the dials. So, Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you.
I would like to make comments on the one pertaining to mental health, mental health illness. I had the honor of presenting yesterday evening to an adult class, and I wanted to hear from them, and they're all local residents. Mental health was a topic of choice. Many of those in attendance spoke of their personal issues with mental health, and they weren't shy about it. They, they were very open, and they're saying they need more help. And the last thing I would like to share pertaining to what I heard last night is that Kaiser is limited with mental health professionals right now, and the individuals are having to go outside of the area to seek treatment, and even in doing so, there's not enough employees, they don't have enough employees in that field to assist the need. So, thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
Thank you for highlighting that, Dr. Chapman, or Councilmember Chapman. So like, later this month, Councilmember Ritchie and I, we're actually going to be hosting a listening session at Pacifica Services, System Living, yeah, thank you. And so some more information will be, be going out there, but it's, you know, just reflective of the proclamation and the announcement, you know, that there's a lot that goes on, a lot of different needs that exist within our community, and I would say that everybody past, current and past, as far as council and staff, have been really interested and dedicated on how we find ways to best serve all our, all our constituents, all our residents. And so, you know, when folks have worked their whole life, worked hard, you know, we want to make sure that, that within reason, we can help them achieve the quality of life and ensure the quality of life that they earn, to make sure we do what we can to protect it. So, that session at the end of the month, just, just to hear back, just to see what's going on and see what ways we can help advocate for different issues. Police, Police Week, can't extend my appreciation enough for Chief Smushler's leadership coming on, you know, the, you know, policing in itself over the evolution of this nation, it's gone through a lot of ups and downs, and for me, I'm really proud to see how every member of that department and people within our community, you know, depending on, you know, what, how they view things or, you know, how they communicated their issues, I'm really happy to see how we've progressed over time to meet the different demands and be patient with our, with ourselves and have grace throughout the whole process. And so I, I see our department continuing to live by, live with integrity and act with integrity and a commitment to our community, and I think that's reciprocated from our community to our, our, not just our police department, but all public safety. So, mental health awareness, I've lost three friends through the years, last few years are acquaintances to suicide, so the worst, one of the worst outcomes. There's a lot of other folks struggling with a lot of other mental health issues. One of the things that I'm hoping to get support from the community is, they actually have this mental health first aid, so typically around the holidays, we start seeing an increase, increased issues associated with mental health. So, I'm thinking sometime around fall, be on the lookout to see the rollout of different mental health first aids. So, the goal for that is to have small groups, just kind of focused on learning on, learning about different issues of how to help maybe ourselves, or help our loved ones or friends that are in those particular situations. Last month, we had a listening session on small businesses, so a lot of great, different input that was provided there. One of the key things I think that I'm very mindful of and that I heard a common theme about was different resources that are available to support small businesses. There is a lot of different resources out there, but I would imagine when you're starting up anything new, there's so much information out there, so how do you go about that? So it'll be kind of interesting to see how, how we move forward. One thing I was hoping to get more out of that session that I really want to follow, trying to knock it all out today. Yeah.
I just want to keep it to the proclamation and not get into some of the council business. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you, I just kind of follow up on what some of my fellow council members have brought up, the importance of mental health. Just this morning, sorry, one of my, one of my buddies from Team of God took his own life, rain corps veteran, I worked with him all over the country responding to natural disasters, and yeah, left behind two kids, and yeah, he had plenty of people reach out to you, nobody knew there was any issues at all, so, yeah. Due to the amount of first responders and veterans we have in our community, this should be a very important topic for all of us. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Wiley?
I just want to say that as an older American, I see a lot of people that are in this age bracket really reaching out and helping a lot of people in the community, and then it's great that there is time and ability to reach out to others, and they serve, the police are out serving all the time, reaching out throughout our community, small businesses are always serving our community at our cleanup, we had a small business helping, so they, they have a lot of service, but they also have needs, and so that's where the mental health comes in. Mental health issues can come across the spectrum of professions and across the ages, so we need to be able to serve people and listen when they have an issue. We need mental health providers like Kaiser's needing more, there's always a need for more, but you can be that for someone else when you just listen to someone, or if you need something, talk to someone. So all these proclamations are related because we all have service, we all have needs, and we all need to listen and work together. But you can be that for someone else when you just listen to someone, or if you need something, talk to someone. So all these proclamations are related because we all have service, we all have needs, and we all need to listen and work together.
Thank you. Councilmembers Stockton.
Yes, I just wanted, I won't reiterate too much of what everyone has said, but Councilmember Roberts, I just want you to know you're not alone in losing loved ones, and you and family of your friend are in my prayers. And I am very proud that our city, our city leadership here and my colleagues, along with our city, continue to proclaim a passion for trying to help all four of these different topics or different people that fall within these categories. And I'm proud to be up here to work with each of you, to really make sure that we we show our aging population that we care about them, to make sure that we not only honor the sacrifice of the law enforcement officers that have paid the ultimate price protecting our communities, but also to value the ones that are still putting the uniform on day in and day out and responding to calls for service when people have no one else to help them. Mental health is such a huge issue in this community, and it affects everything that we, every decision that we make up here. There is almost a mental health component to that, and so many byproducts from that for related to housing or homelessness or related you know, just some of the things that affect our quality of life here. And small business, right? Small businesses are the backbone of our community. So I'm just very proud that we have, there's a lot of proclamations, but these are all super important things for our community and I would say for our country. And I'm glad that as a council collectively, we've all been so passionate at trying to make sure that we pay homage and honor all of these different people in these.
Thank you. Councilmember Richie.
Thank you so much. After hearing Jason, it is, life's amazing. What seems important is really important to them more. I mean, small business, I'm just proud, but who cares? Like, they'll wake up tomorrow, open the doors with their businesses. That doesn't matter today. After what Robert said, that's important. It's, I've made a career. My dad was in the US Air Force pilot. I was talking to him today. I can tell he's getting older. I can tell. So it's a whole new story, but I love him, oldie dad. But it's serious. I've I've really talked to a lot of officers, first responders, and there's so many people that when we start to build these friendships, start to listen to their stories, a lot of people that are going through pain. I'm on the school board. Now imagine how many kids eighteen are going through a lot of stuff. They're like screaming inside. But it's, it's something that we really need to take awareness. I mean, I hope everyone gets to age, being called old American. A lot of people are making it there. A lot of officers, first responders, a lot of military. I mean, more people in military get killed after they get out from mental health related suicides than actually behind a gun or in battle. Like, these are things that they don't talk about. Where there's kids that are really affected the last two years, there's adults that are affected. So there's four things here, but I would really, and I know the police really fall into the area of mental health, and they need to help. The stuff they see is pretty crazy. I have a lot of friends who are firefighters. The calls they go on, it screws you up sometimes. And so we really need to address people we call heroes because they need help too. And the kids are, the last few years went tough. So wish we can come together and just really focus on mental health, making sure that everyone can make it to their golden years with the ability to enjoy it. I really appreciate your passion, Jason.
Thank you. And thank you all for your thoughts and your comments. It's humbling to know what our city is capable of doing in service, and this is our staff. So thank you, the staff. But it is also a very revealing subject of everything that is about wellness. And that's what a community is because it comes down to all the things that make up a community, but it comes down to our individual families and friends and loved ones. And so science is of what's really important. So. With that, we're going to move on to item six. It's our consent calendar. Anyone wishing? Sorry.
Six A because it's within a certain distance of my house. Need to recuse myself from it.
So you'll recuse yourself from six A?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the council wishing to pull an item for any reason? Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item from consent? All right, seeing done at this point, what we will do, can I entertain a motion to approve items six B through E? Motion six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, we have item six A.
Motion approved six A.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that will pass separately, and we will move on from there. Next on our agenda is business from the floor. This is a time for anyone from the public wishing to address the council on an item not on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction. So come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Margie Stern, and I am a former parent of a child with a disability who died. I'm also a speech pathologist. I'm on the Play for All Park Committee. And I wanted to address the fact that the parking, well, first of all, the Play for All Park Phase One has opened, and we're really, really excited about that. And it's a very popular park. Everybody goes there. It's wonderful. We have thirty-four parking spaces. So people are parking in the dirt, people are parking on the street, they're parking on the other side of the street, and they're crossing over with their children on Elmira Road. So I would like to bring to the attention of, and I wrote a letter to each of you. I don't know if any of you got it today. I sent a letter, an email to each of you that we need help to expand the parking at Play for All Park. We have gotten a grant from the state to finish Phase Two, but it does not include the parking. And of course, as you know, that the cost of everything has gone up, materials and everything. We would like to expand the parking to a hundred and ten spaces. And there's a plan, a drawing to include that. And so I'd like to encourage you to perhaps use some district money from the city to help us expand the parking so that while we're doing Phase Two, people can safely come out there and use Phase One. Phase Two is the two Challenger baseball fields and the two dog parks and also the trails. And that is what this, the money from the state will be paying for. And so I just would like to encourage you to help us fix that parking because it's, you've probably been out there. It's quite a mess. Not only that, people are parking in the dirt, and then other people are parking in the space which takes you to the dirt. So then they don't have a way to get out. So we need help. So I would just like to raise the consciousness about that we would like to increase the parking lot at the Play for All Park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Darlene Crumbo. I have called Vacaville home since nineteen eighty-five. I have been a small business owner in downtown Vacaville for thirty-three years. I am a pickleball player. I started playing pickleball in twenty twenty-one. My sister and brother-in-law taught a group of my friends and I how to play, and we've been playing ever since. I have met such nice, wonderful people here in Vacaville, but some have moved to Fairfield when they got their dedicated courts built last summer. I stayed here in Vacaville where my nice community is. I want to play here. Since pickleball does not have designated courts in Vacaville, we are often kicked off the tennis courts by the tennis community teaching lessons, and we can't play. We have the pickleball lines painted on the tennis courts at North Orchard and Three Oaks Community Center from twenty fifteen. It is discouraging to attend parks meetings and not be heard, or to realize the master plan is a five, seven, or ten-year plan. We have gathered a group of pickleball players and formed a nonprofit five oh one C three Vacaville Pickleball Club, and we have nowhere to play. We just keep putting one foot in front of the other and doing the next right thing. I am proud of my hometown. I want designated courts like the ones I played in and other parts of the country. I want to be alive to enjoy pickleball courts here in Vacaville. I want six courts or more to host tournaments and encourage young people with places to play. The top U.S. Pickleball National Champion is a sixteen-year-old female. It's not just a sport for retired tennis players or fifty-plus seniors. Since September last year, we have gone to the Parks and Recs Commission's meetings and made our presence known. We have made our wants known. The commissioners have heard us and encouraged us along the way, and now we need to make our presence known to you. We need our own courts with room to grow. According to the U.S. Pickleball Association, pickleball has grown a hundred and fifty-eight point six percent in the last three years, eighty percent in the last year alone. So I have said, build it, and they will come. Help us by doing the next right thing and help us help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Goodwin. My wife and I, well, our family has been a part of Vacaville for over a hundred and thirty years. My daughters are like fifth-generation Vacaville people. We've been here for a long time. But I also wanted to talk about pickleball. I, first of all, we are having, thank you for letting us set up our demo court out there, and I hope you got the chance to view it. And I wanted to invite you to come out and play. May twentieth, not this Saturday, but a week from Saturday, North Orchard Park, we're going to have our first annual pickleball social. It'll be from nine AM to noon. We're going to have food. We're going to have nets set up. We're going to chalk out our own lines. We'll be all ready for you. We'll have extra paddles. All you have to do is come out, bring your kids, bring yourselves, bring some tennis shoes, and we'll teach you how to play pickleball, and I guarantee you'll enjoy it. You might be out there every weekend after that. Pickleball is a very social sport. We, as a group, we connect via social media. We figure out where everybody's playing. We pick our couple's usual spots, and we go up there. We set up at least four nets, and we play, I don't know, five times a week. And we play as a group. We don't just go out there as a twosome and just play. We play four people. It takes about fifteen minutes for a game. We switch partners. We, you know, mix and mingle. It's awesome, social community type event. It's awesome. I bring that up because we have, I know the city, even though we don't have dedicated courts yet, I know the city has in place agreements to create a couple courts, permanent courts here and there. And what I want to say is that's kind of not the solution we're looking for. We're looking for a regional facility that has at least six courts. Six courts right now is what we would need right now, and that's almost starting from scratch because we use up that many. And it's not just tournaments we're talking about. We use those when we go, we use at least four when we go out and play every time. So six courts is what it would take. And you can fit, you saw the pickleball court out there. You can fit space of two tennis courts. You can easily fit six pickleball courts. So it doesn't take a lot of space. And anyways, we would appreciate, appreciate the support. I don't think, I've attended a lot of the Parks and Rec Committee Commission meetings. I don't know of the plan yet for a regional-type pickleball facility. I hear a lot of Turk talk. I know it's not happening at Centennial Park, but I don't know what the plan is. And I hope, I hope the city gets a plan soon because at the commission meeting, they were talking about Centennial Park taking not just ten years, but I heard forty years for the all five phases of the Centennial Park to be built. So I know it takes a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Balls well, you can probably tell by the hat. My name is Brian Peity. I'm a previous business owner here in Vacaville, employed quite a few people. I stumbled upon this group last Thursday, bought a racket Wednesday night, played my first pickleball last Thursday. I played again this morning because they meet on one of the times they meet is Tuesdays and Thursday mornings from nine to eleven. Great group of people. I mean, just vibrant, fun group. And I heard today that they were coming tonight. I'm not part of the, I'm learning about it, but I just learned today that they were coming tonight, and I just wanted to come and support them and put my two cents worth in on this. I saw that you had a proclamation about older Americans. You know, I know that you and the Parks and Recreation Department don't just talk the talk by giving out proclamations. You actually do things. And so does the Parks and Rec. But this is an opportunity to actually do something, not just say it, but to actually do it. Help these people. Pickleball, as they said, grew a hundred and fifty-eight percent. It is the fastest-growing sport in the United States of America. There is no sport that is growing faster. None. You might have seen, somebody mentioned about the lady racquetball champion is sixteen. You might have seen her on TV on Sunday on ESPN. They played it twice. They showed, ESPN was showing the two tournaments that she won. So what I'm getting at is, we need your help. I heard today for the first time that come summertime, once the kids are out of school and the Parks and Recs start using the courts for tennis, that we may not have anywhere to play consistently, knowing, okay, we can meet at this time at this place. That may not be even available to us come June, July, let alone this long-term meeting courts to actually do things. So that's it. That's quick to try to get to the point, but we need your help. We need Parks and Recs help. And anything you could do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
New in town, my family and I moved here last summer. My husband works at Travis Air Force Base. And I, last time we were, came to a meeting, I brought my whole crew, but everyone couldn't make it tonight. I've got four boys. And we have lived all over the place, as you can imagine, and we were super excited to move here. We've heard the weather's great, and it's so far been an awesome place to live, but we really severely miss pickleball. And these guys love playing with my ten-year-old. He actually whips me. He's definitely an intermediate player. And he learned when we lived in Florida by the elderly people that we lived in kind of a an area with a lot of retired retirees, and they were so excited to teach him. And, you know, lots of the kids in the neighborhood would come and play, and I have just loved seeing how it crosses generations. So it seems silly to be like, really emphasizing this like pickleball when there's like really major issues on the agenda, right? But I actually heard what you were saying, even though I was outside, I heard about the mental health comments and issues that were brought up, and that is really close to my heart and my family. We deal with that as well. During when, and you can even Google this, like pickleball and mental health. And there's been Psychology Today said it's like the number one in two thousand twenty-one, so like the number one help during COVID to combat mental health issues. Just getting outside, and like they said, it's so social, it's easy to pick up. That's why people love it. It's not like tennis is great, but you really have to train. You have to really learn and practice. So anyway, and I know that there's a, I'm just representing also the military population here, that there's a lot of transplants that I know who have moved here, and they feel the same way we do. We're like, there's no dedicated pickleball courts. Like, what? And so they just stop playing. And so I'm just determined to try, even though I may just be here short term, I know there's, the military base isn't going away. And there's a lot of military families who also are hoping to be able to continue those traditions in their families. And I just wanted to add that specifically having several courts so that like beginners, like my kids who want to come play, you know, some of these guys are really good, and they only have so much time to play, and I would, they're so kind, and they're always welcoming if I bring the kids. But it would be nice to have enough courts that we can bring them and not like be competing on anyone's more serious game, if that makes sense. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Business from the floor. And with that, we're going to move on to item eight, public hearings. I see none. Now we're going to move on to item nine. We're going to go to 9C. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is really just an update on Measure M. This is the time of year where we begin our budget process. And typically, we orient the council by starting off with an update on Measure M. And given that we have two new council members on the dais this year, we felt it was appropriate to walk you through some of the details of Measure M, what it is, what it is not, how it's been used thus far, and what are some of the commitments. Now, please keep in mind that as our team walks you through that tonight, it's really just meant to be a quick introduction to it. We are fully prepared to make a more in-depth presentation this Friday when we start talking about goals and priorities in terms of how to use those funds going forward. So with that, I will turn it over to our team, led by Ken Metzameer, our Finance Director, and Rika Gidri, our Program Manager from the City Manager's Office.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the City Manager mentioned, this is really an update of the Measure M sales tax in advance of the planning session and the budget study sessions that we have coming up. And so what's on the agenda this evening? First, we'll be going over a Measure M recap. So what is Measure M? An update on the numbers. How is Measure M allocated? And I'll be passing on to our Program Manager, Rika Gidri, to go over the program updates and the status of those. So what is Measure M? So Measure M is an add-on sales tax that was originally approved by voters in November of 2012 and then approved for an extension in November of 2016 for 20 years. And at the time when it was approved, it was approved at a 3/4 of a cent sales tax. And Measure M is sometimes mistaken as a bond or a special sales tax, but it is a general sales tax that can be used for general municipal purposes, as stated in the ballot measure that you see on the slide. This slide right here shows where we're projecting Measure M to end for the current fiscal year, so as of June of 2023. So for the current fiscal year, we're projecting revenues to be around $23.1 million, expenses to come in at $14.1 million, and that fund balance at the end of the year to be around $55 million. That fund balance, we do separate into two buckets. And so that very first bucket is commitment. So of that $55.3 million, a little under $24 million of that is tied up on items that councils previously approved for CIP projects that they've been budgeted and approved, but they're just not going to be fully spent by the end of this fiscal year. So those commitments would carry on to the new fiscal year. The uncommitted balance, which is that $31.4 million, is, as its name states, is really the uncommitted amount that isn't tied to any projects or anything at all. And kind of bringing this back to, and relating to the budget updates that we bring to council quarterly, when we talk about having a total general fund reserve of 50-plus million and a 40% reserve, this $31 million is part of that. And in fact, it's more than half of that amount. So the general fund reserve isn't separate from this amount. This uncommitted balance is part of that general fund reserve that we talk about when we do those budget updates. So how is Measure M spent? I'll walk through this chart. So on the left-hand side right here is, the green column is our projected revenues for the year, so the $23 million. And then on the right side, you have our projected expenses. And so I know there's a lot of colors to this. We'll go over the different categories further in the presentation. But just at a high level, Measure M is spent on ongoing programs, which is the section in green. So those are going to be things such as our street maintenance, park beautification. These are programs that are funded through Measure M on an annual basis. And then it also funds staffing, which is the section below. It funds pilot programs. So these are things such as our EDI or DEI initiatives, the neighborhood cleanup programs, the council district programs, the apprentice program. Those are considered pilot programs. The one-time projects are going to be things that are more like specific capital improvement projects that are related to park improvements or facility improvements. It funds our PERS additional discretionary payments. So this was a new item that was proposed as going into this 23-year budget. And this is really making an additional contribution to our PERS unfunded liability to save on long-term interest costs. And so when you take those items of what we're spending with the Measure M dollars, that's that $14.1 million. We are projecting Measure M to have a surplus of $9 million if you kind of look at Measure M on its own. But it is important to remember that Measure M is part of the general fund, and that's kind of what these last two bullet points are related to. And so although we're projecting a surplus on the Measure M side of about $9 million when we end this fiscal year, it's the opposite with the rest of the general fund. So on the rest, with the rest of the general fund, we are projecting expenses to actually exceed revenues. And so when you look at the total general fund as a whole, while we project a surplus of about $1 to $2 million, it really is because of the surplus or the fact that the Measure M revenues are higher than expenses that's really carrying the general fund as a whole. And that, kind of that deficit, if you will, on the non-Measure M side is indicated by this kind of crosshatch pattern, this section of the column right here. As far as staffing goes, I will not go through each one of these, but Measure M does fund 29 positions citywide. And so just to highlight several of them, one of the positions would be the Program Manager position, which is Rika's position seated to the left of me. Our Economic Development Director is also funded through Measure M. On the Public Safety side, we have six firefighter paramedics, eight officers, a police captain, three POW coordinator positions that are also funded through Measure M. And then with Parks and Rec and Public Works, you also see that there are positions related to a planner. And on the Public Works side, maintenance worker positions, two of them that are also funded through Measure M. So in total, there's 29 positions that are funded through Measure M. The following slide is a breakdown of the different Measure M programs. And so for ongoing programs for the current year, we had budgeted $5.1 million. And so as I stated, these are annual amounts. And so this, these are amounts that were budgeted in '22, '23. They would also get budgeted in '24 years going forward. So these are things like our park beautification programs, street maintenance, funding for vehicle and equipment replacement, homeless remediation, funding for our Family Resource Center and POW programs, and our biotech strategy. The pilot programs are, as I mentioned earlier, the pilot program, the five-year pilot programs that were started in fiscal year 2022. So these are like the council district benefit programs, the DEI program, youth scholarships, neighborhood cleanup. And then more recently, in this current fiscal year, is that fire apprentice program that started up. One-time projects are going to be, again, more specific to park improvements, facility improvements. These are items that are not like an annual-funded item, but more so specific to a particular project. PERS ADP payment I had mentioned earlier, ongoing staffing at $6.3 million. If you were kind of to compare the slides, you'll notice that this slide shows $17.5 million for the expenses, whereas what I had showed earlier was $14 million. The difference being that although we budget for $17.5 million in the year, we don't spend that entire amount because you could have things such as vacancies that come up. There could be projects that don't get completed in the year. And so they end up carrying forward and end up showing up as a commitment because the money hasn't left the door as of June. So that's the difference there. For project funding, set aside, I had mentioned earlier that in our fund balance, there was about a $23.9 million commitment. And so that too can be broken down into separate, two different categories. And so about $15.1 million of that $23.9 million is related to active projects. So these are projects that have been budgeted for, approved by council within the past two years that when we get to June, they aren't going to be completed yet. And so those budget amounts will carry forward into the upcoming year. These are projects that are being actively worked on. The potential projects, which are highlighted, $8.7 million. These are items that when Measure M was originally extended back in 2018, there was some initial funding that was put aside for these. These projects aren't actively being worked on. They were kind of, I think, ideas or initiatives that were put in place at the time, but warranted further discussion. Reason why they're highlighted is kind of previewing or leading up to the strategic planning session that we have on Friday and also the budget study sessions that we have coming up. These are areas where we definitely would like council feedback at that time on, if these items are priorities, then we're going to need to fund them more than what's currently set there. If they aren't as big of priorities as some of the other stuff that comes up, these are areas where you could potentially defund these projects and then move the funding to another area. So this is, that's why it's highlighted, is this is something that we would need to discuss further as far as what's council's priority of them. For the five-year pilot programs that were approved in fiscal year '22, not asking for any approval this evening, but bringing this up as a discussion topic, kind of leading up to budget again. For the five-year pilot programs, we're in year two, about to complete year two of the pilot programs. And in that time, we've been able to see from a funding standpoint where areas where we maybe need additional funding or less funding, and also just from an efficiency standpoint, whether it makes sense to keep this particular pilot program going or maybe change it in some manner. And so the very first item where we're proposing a change for consideration is in the adaptive sensory equipment area, where we're proposing reducing this by $50,000. This is not to get rid of this particular, the funding. That really, the idea here is that with the adaptive sensory equipment, it makes more sense to fund that when you have an individual park project come up. And if sensory adaptive equipment is to be part of that project, it makes more sense to include that as part of the budget for that project as opposed to having this set aside of $50,000 each year. It's a general amount that isn't really committed to any project rather than funded in that manner. It makes more sense to, as a project comes up, if adaptive sensory equipment should be part of that project, that you increase the budget to capture that. The second proposed change here is with the youth scholarship program. There is $100,000 that's allocated to that annually. Last year, we came back to council prior to the end of the fiscal year to ask for additional funding to fund individuals or applicants that were on the waiting list. And then when we have our budget update in a couple of weeks, we'll be doing the same. And so just the fact that we've gone through this two years now, there's going to be two, each year we were going to have to come back for additional funding for this program. One of the things that we're proposing for consideration with the upcoming budget for fiscal year '24 is actually bumping up the youth scholarship to $150,000. With that, I'll pass it on to Rika.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. So the city is continuing work with Nicole Anderson and Associates for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program. To date, 26 sessions have been completed, three with department heads, five with public safety, and the overall city staff, 18. We do anticipate training sessions with the community later this summer or fall. So as Ken mentioned earlier, regardless of how the money is allocated, three parks have been identified to receive adaptive sensory equipment. Meadowlands Park in District 2, it is out to bid this month, and play equipment includes adaptive swing. Sierra Vista in District 4, currently in construction, in the construction document phase, out to bid in 2024. And the Fairmount Bealard Park, again, in District 4, adaptive play equipment has been purchased, and it's out to bid in the fall. Next slide, please. The property abatement program is underway. Services include trimming trees, weed abatement in front and rear yards, as well as graffiti removal on private property. It also offers assistance with towing or removing any inoperable vehicles. Next slide. Neighborhood cleanup program. This program started back in October 2021. The city held a total of four events to date. Very, very popular program. The most recent is in District, was in District 5 back in September on La Cruz Lane. We had 64 volunteers, 20 fence boards were replaced, as well as 24 tons of waste removed. Just last month, we had another cleanup, we had another cleanup on Needham Drive on April 15th. We had 61 volunteers, removed 30 tons of waste, and we also replaced about 455 fence boards. And as a recap for the youth scholarship program, $100,000 was approved by the city council. $1,000 credit was given to each eligible family within, with children 17 years old and under for Vacaville Recreation activities and programs. Now, there are over 550 activities that are offered. And some listed here include before and after-school care, sports leagues and classes, music, art, science camps, swim lessons, as well as karate and self-defense classes. Now, overall, funds have been allocated to 116 families. However, as Ken mentioned earlier, it is under budget. So 60 families are currently on the waitlist, and staff will be requesting an additional $50,000 on May 23rd. Grant matching program. The Fire Department received a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award back in July 2022 to send firefighters to paramedics training related to code compliance. Match funds awarded was $49,170.55, and that was a 10% match. Council District Benefit Program. So a brief background, each district and one outlarge mayor receives $50,000 annually to use for a project or service that benefits the community. The Council District Benefit Program is designed to provide opportunities to improve and beautify neighborhood public spaces, provide positive long-term impacts to the community, nurture a sense of community pride, and improve community resiliency. As most of you all know, you've been very, very busy. I just highlighted a few things that we've been working on for the past two years through this program. Soccer goals were installed in Ridgeview and Cordero Parks in District 1, which I hear has been heavily used by the residents. Water-efficient landscaping, where residents can take advantage of up to $2 per square feet if they replace their turf to water-efficient landscaping. Hometown Hero Program, Tree Rebate Program, debris bin events. District 6 did hold their second annual spruce-up day just last Saturday. Swim days, movie nights, snow days, monthly listening sessions are still continuing throughout the year, and donations to Vacaville nonprofits. The Vacaville Fire Apprentice Program was aimed at increasing diversity and the number of candidates for the Vacaville Fire Department. 337 applications were received. And last month, on April 27th, a badge-pinning ceremony was held where 10 firefighter apprentices were sworn in. That concludes my presentation. I'll pass it back.
Thanks, Rika. So the following slide is really just a roadmap for, we are jumping into the budget very quickly. And so the next session that we're going to have that ties into the budget is going to be this Friday on May 12th, where we have our Strategic Plan Priorities and Visioning Session. On May 23rd, we have our first of two budget study sessions, which one we'll be going over kind of the budget process, budget augmentations. Budget Study Session number two is when we have our department presentations that are as part of that budget study session. And then finally, on June 27th, is the budget adoption. That concludes the presentation. Be happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any member of the council have any questions? Councilmember Sill.
Question was on scholarship funds. So we have, I apologize, I forget the difference in applicants. So two questions on that. Are there ever any unused funds that have been reserved for families who qualify? And I'm assuming those unused funds would roll over. So I just want to confirm that. And then number two, I'm just curious, is there a reason why we're not suggesting just increasing the, I think it would be $16,000 more to cover 100% of the waitlist?
Sure. I see Reggie, our Director of Parks and Rec, coming down to address that.
Go on down.
Good evening, council, vice mayor, mayor. The unused funds do go back into the pot and get reallocated. And what was your second question?
So then if we have 26, yeah, if we have 26 additional families that still wouldn't be allocated, is there a reason why we're not asking for another $26,000?
Well, we're going to be asked for $50,000.
But, okay, hold on, let me see if my math is right here. $150,000 covers 150 families, right?
That's not, well, no. Some families get $1,000, larger families get $2,000.
So here's my question then. Let me rephrase it.
Okay.
Does that amount cover all the families that are on the waitlist?
$150,000 would cover all the families on the waitlist.
All right, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions here, I'm going to open it up to the public wishing to comment on this item. Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close public comment. Does anyone up here have any other comments? Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It's good to see where all this Measure M money is going. One of the things that I thought was really impressive is I know that there was a pretty engaged discussion when we talked about the Fire Apprentice Program. And I just wanted to say how pleased I am to see that 337 people put in for that program. I think that speaks volumes about providing opportunity. And if there are ways that we may be able to grow that program so that more of those people can get involved, I think that's just absolutely wonderful that that many people are interested in serving. Great presentation. Thanks for kind of spelling it all out, but that really stood out to me. I think that in, if we talk to Jessica or some of the hiring folks, if we could get 337 applications for some of these other positions, that would be like outstanding. So really speaks volumes to the culture chief that you're building within the Fire Department and that that many people want to be involved. So give it a good word.
Councilmember Chap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Promise. Question. You have a tryout, tryout loan coming up for the youth pretty soon where they're going to be swimming, running and biking. Question. Do you provide, provide the bikes to the youth that do not have bikes in order for them to participate in that? And I know this is the first one, it's your inaugural event or year. But are you going to be able to assist young people who do not have bikes?
This being our first year, we will not be able to provide that service. They will have to bring their own bikes.
I could get bikes.
What's the amount?
CMF has a bike repair program.
We can connect, yeah. If, yeah, we can find out if those that are interested in participating need bikes and we can work with.
You may have to put the word out there because they may not even think that it's possible if they're, you know, if they don't already have the equipment.
Right.
So somehow try to communicate with those families. I would hate for any young person to miss out. And you're covering what, seven to 17-year-olds?
Correct. Yes, we can put something out and we'll make sure we connect with those individuals if they, if they need that assistance.
I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the.
And we should, we could also expand some of our conversations on Friday, but as far as, these are great pilot programs and that's just what it does. It allows us opportunities to see how we can improve them, but times it takes money.
Further discussion if we were committing that money?
Correct. If you were going to go forward with any of these items, it would require additional funding. These were just monies that were set aside, I believe, the very first year to be discussed further.
So what about the 15 million for the active projects? Is that anywhere close to funding any of those or?
That should be, it should be. I mean, that, those are going to be, the active projects are going to be the items that we, that are actively being worked on. And so if, for whatever reason, you know, it wasn't sufficient, those are going to be items that would come forward when we're doing like the fiscal year 23 CIP budget update or CIP budget augmentation for this upcoming year. So those amounts should be close to what's needed. And if not, then those are the items that would come back to council in order to, to update council on what is needed.
Then maybe I missed this, but maybe it wasn't there. Can you tell me what was our Measure M revenue for this year compared to Measure M revenue for last year? Just the revenue piece of it?
Sure. So Measure M has been kind of tracking over the last couple of years to where it has been above $20 million. And so it is 23.1 this year. Part of that amount is, as the council may recall, that with Measure M, we did some interfund loans to our utilities department so they can buy some vehicles rather than go out and get external financing. So there's about $200,000 in loan payments that's part of that. That's different this year than last year, but.
Loan payment back to us? So this includes two extra thousand or a hundred?
$200,000, yes.
Extra for that, okay.
Correct. So it was, it's 23 this year and I, I want to say last year, it was above 20 million, probably 21, 22, thereabouts, but not too significantly different.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment?
Just real quick, I want to clarify something. Ken, if you can go back to the one slide on the, on the projected, the commitments, I'm sorry. There we go, the active projects. If I'm not mistaken, you shared with me that that figure 15.1 does actually include the additional funding request that's on the agenda tonight as well.
That is correct. Yes, the next item is included in this active project amount.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide where you identify all the districts and the projects, projects that they have going on? On that slide, I just want to let it be known that District Four is not noted on there and there's a reason for it. I represent District Four and I will be meeting with Reese. We have a meeting tomorrow and you'll be seeing more.